Hi, Ted Riley, Representative Stechline Communications, the parent company of KGYN Radio here in Guyman. We're putting on a border buck off bull riding event on August the 21st at Henry Hitch Arena here and then the next day in Garden City. And I would like to request to the city council to place this as an agenda item on your next meeting on July the 13th for possible consideration of sponsorship funding for $2,000 for our event. I've given city manager Mitchell a letter along with the proposal to pass out to each of you and I would like for it to be considered as an intended item on July the 13th if we could. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's coming in late but she wants to probably get done so she can go. We're on public comments, Charity, do you want to talk?
I thought you started at six. Am I wrong about that?
Well, our Mickey says...
No, it is two minutes. I know, I'm sorry.
He has a different clock.
We got a different clock. Is it, are we ahead?
He has a Mickey Mouse clock.
It's ahead, somebody said.
He doesn't believe these clocks.
Well, this is an official, the official clock. Since I've been on city council. So, if somebody wants to... Now it says 303. We've always used that. We'd probably need to go to an atomic clock.
I've asked you to go to the...
I apologize for putting you on the spot.
No, I apologize for being late.
No, no, you're fine. So, tell us about 4th of July.
Um, the 4th of July, the Parks Committee is going to, we're hosting an event and we're starting registration at 9:30 and we're gonna have a pep parade, a Mr. and Mrs. Firecracker, a turtle race, and a bike parade. And I don't know, a lot of you probably remember when Guyman used to do that, the Lions Club was really involved in it. When I was a little kid, we used to have these events and so we're just trying to bring it back. We're gonna have prizes. It's for 4th graders and below. And we're gonna have a first, second, and third in each age category. So, we're, in each event, we're dividing each group into three age groups and then we'll do a first, second, and third in each event. And then the Guyman Fire Department is judging and, um, let me think, oh, the Guyman Ambassadors and the Guyman Lions Club. And then the Presbyterian men are officiating the turtle races.
This is where?
Oh, it's at Sunset Lake, I'm sorry.
In what time?
It's, registration's starting at 9:30. The events will start at 9:45. Yeah. And I can send, um, I can send, I put the official schedule on Facebook but I can send that so you guys could have it in an email. Cause each event is like 30 minutes apart approximately. So, they, we end, I think, about 11:45. So, but I think it's gonna be really fun. We already have a lot of people on the Facebook event, which doesn't really mean a whole bunch, but that say they're interested or attending, so...
So, we really need to spread the word.
Yes, you can. That would be awesome.
Get your bike decker in.
Yes. I could put it, I guess I could put it on the, um, PTCI has a public page too and I didn't think about that, so I can put it there.
And it'll go out to the region. We have regional channels, so...
Okay.
We can, we can probably do that.
Yeah, I can do that. So, anyways, we wanna try it out this year and then maybe next year expand it to more events, but this year we're focusing on the little kids and we're really excited about it and think it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, we invite all of you guys to attend too, of course.
You bet.
Do you have any questions about it?
Do we have to bring a little kid?
No. If you want to enter, you have to bring the little kid, yes. But, yeah, if you wanna enter any of the contests, you do have to bring the little kid. But, you can come and just watch, observe.
Think about Mr. Firecracker over here.
Yeah. He would probably win, hands down, grand champion.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We hope it's a success.
So too. Thanks.
Are there any other public comments and announcements? We're gonna back up because we always start, generally start with the city council and my, I'm used to doing it that way. So, we're gonna back up and we're gonna, if you all stand, I'm gonna ask from the rock of the salvation, Pastor Ella Alizaro Galdino, if you'd come up and give us the invocation.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Give me to pray this tonight. Then I'm gonna pray in Spanish, okay? Padre vengo en el nombre de Jesús dándote gracias por esta bendición y por este privilegio cual tú me permites, señor delante de cada persona que se encuentra en esta noche. Gracias Dios mío por esta bendición cual tú me permites venir ante tu presencia para rogar, para interceder por cada una de las personas que trabajan en este lugar. Dios mío te pido la sabiduría, el entendimiento para cada una de ellos, para los proyectos que tienen ellos, señor, seguir adelante. Ruego Dios mío que en esta tarde, señor, tú de sabiduría, conocimiento, entendimiento a cada uno de ellos, señor. Aleluya que en un futuro, señor, no muy lejos puedan ver el, señor, el trabajo que, señor de sus manos que están haciendo. Ruego, padre santo, en el nombre de Jesús, que bendigas a cada una de estas personas, bendito Cristo. Que los llene de tu gracia, de tu amor, y misericordia. Pidemos por la ciudad, señor, de aquí de Guyman, que tú, señor, bendigas esta ciudad y los pueblos alrededores. Que le des a cada persona, señor, esa sabiduría para hacer el trabajo que les corresponde a cada uno de ellos y puedan, señor, extenderse hacia los demás personas. Rogamos, bendito Cristo, que tu gracia, que tu amor, y tu misericordia sea con ellos. Tu palabra dice que los que confían en Jehová son como el monte de Sión y ellos están confiando en esta oración, señor, que se hará en esta tarde. Rogamos que tú les bendigas, que tú los guardes, que tú los protejas. Bendiga su familia, bendiga, señor, cada señor trato que estén haciendo en esta tarde, que cada uno de ellos, señor, sepan que tú estás, señor, a su lado para darle, señor, el entendimiento y así hacer las cosas mejor. Sé, señor, que esta ciudad se levantará, señor, por cada uno de las personas que se encuentran aquí con un buen consejo para una buena ayuda a los demás personas que están, señor, a su, a su lado, a su trabajo. Padre santo, te damos gracias por esta bendición y por este privilegio. Bendice a todas las personas que trabajan en este lugar, señor, desde la persona que tiene bajos trabajos, señor, a las personas, a los supervisores, que ellos, Dios mío, aleluya, puedan, señor, ayudar a los demás personas para seguir adelante. Te damos gracias por esta preciosa bendición cual tú me permites, señor Jesús, en esta tarde. Que la gracia de nuestro señor Jesucristo, el amor de Dios, y la comunión del Espíritu Santo sea con ellos. Gracias, señor, por esta oportunidad que tú me permites de poder orar por cada uno, señor, por Mr. Larry Michael, señor, por Sergio Albides, Larry Sour, I mean Swager, right, Kim Peterson, Chad Craino, and Sam Livingwood, Good, Shelley, Jackie, David, Pete, and Miss Claire. Señor, te doy gracias y por cada una de las personas que se encuentran en esta tarde, señor, que tú les bendigas, que tú las guardes, señor, y que cada uno del trabajo que están haciendo le recompense, señor, por el esfuerzo que ellos hacen, que les ayude, señor, cada día a hacer esto en el nombre del Padre, en el nombre del Hijo, y del Espíritu Santo. Amen.
Amen.
Gracias, thank you.
Thank you. Chief McFadden, would you leave us in the pledge?
Why do we leave? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number four, this final update and emergency cleanup. Mr. David Harris.
As you can tell, I'm not Mitch Wagner. I'm not that pretty. He did, he did present a report for y'all, just on how much we spent on the project, total number of loads, how much was paid, and total number of tons that were brought in. To me, it seemed like a great project. It did help people that were cleaning up, just to help cut some of the costs. It's not a huge amount for us, but it was 144 tons of brush and that is a giant pile of brush that helped clean that. I did think it helped incentivize some of the people. We did have a few citizens that took it on as a project and we had several of those that received a lot of this money. To me, it was a great deal. There's no way in the world we could get this much done with all the other stuff. This has not included us, the city work that was done with all the people as well. This is in addition to. So, I think it was a good project overall. When we passed the, when y'all passed the ordinance, we didn't expect to have a snowstorm next week. So, it was a little bumpy to start with. We planned to have it in time and, of course, we had to pick it up a little bit, as y'all, as y'all know. But, do y'all have any questions or anything on that?
Well, I agree with you. I was, I hauled some stuff to the dump the other day in the pile of trees. I pulled up there and I thought, wait, where'd they come from? It's a pretty good sized stack.
Yeah, and just before that, we had burned the previous storm. So, this is all the, all the stuff from the new one, so... We don't like one storm, we sure don't like two, but...
Maybe this will be the last one.
We roll with what we get.
Any questions, discussion?
Great, Roger.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Great success, man.
And the next list items all have something I might have to say. I don't have any comments, but I'll sit here if y'all have any questions.
Well, let's just go right toward it then. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of change order number one to champion coatings for a decrease of $1,591.87. Change order is attached. Any discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve change order number one for a decrease of $1,591.87.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible acts on approval of the change order number two to champion coatings for a decrease of $2,750. Change order is attached.
I will make a comment on this. There were some things that were included in the original bid that were not needed because the tank was not as in better shape as it is, so they were reduced and that's why the decrease.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change of order number two to champion coatings for a decrease of $2,750. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible acts on pay request number two final in the amount of $45,978.13 to champion coatings for the Seaboard Elevated Tower rehabilitation. Pay request number two is attached. Any questions, motion?
Are you happy with their work?
All inspections passed and looked good. Any deficiencies, they had to come back and increase the thickness of the paint. So, we had a good contractor did the work and we're happy with it. It's all online and working.
How many inspections?
There was two that I know of where they actually climbed the tank and went up and that was some of the pay requests we had on previous ones where once they got the blast... Actually, I think there was three because they did one for prep. Prep work before the paint was put down, then after the first set, and then there was inside and outside.
Who was the entity that was inspecting?
I don't have that in front of me. It was a contractor. We'll have to look on the previous ones. They're out of Dallas, but they're, they're a tank inspection firm, that's what they do.
Okay.
That's why I mentioned that it was cheap because I wouldn't climb that tank for 10 times that amount of money.
I'd like to see the inspectors once we get done.
The report?
Yes. Well, the entity that inspected, they would be on that report, right?
Okay, I think, I think I sent y'all that report with the weekly reports about two weeks ago, but I've, I've got that against the impact, do you?
Any other discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we pay request number two final in the amount of $45,978.13 champion coating, item seven.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second.
Swager.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to authorize Cardinal Engineering to add for, advertise for bids on replacement water well number 23.
This is, the next two are projects that we discussed in the workshop and we're now ready with the design work to go out to bid. If the council approves these, then we will advertise with a open bid date, probably about 30 days, end of July sometime, and at that time, hopefully, we have some really good bids and, and have a little money left over, so we'll have another project to consider.
Any discussion, questions, motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Cardinal Engineering to advertise bids on replacement water well number 23.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discuss, discussion and possible action to authorize Cardinal Engineering to advertise for bids on the list station renovations.
Right, and this is the one we talked about. We have eight and I think the base bid is gonna be for either three or four and then alternates for another two or three. I'm not sure.
Actually, we'll do for six and then two additional for the add alternates towards the end.
We're gonna try to get, actually try to get all eight of them done.
If, if the prices are good enough and that's what we, that's what we think, we will be able to add. If we just want to do seven or if we want to do eight, we can add those additional once it's begun.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Cardinal Engineering to advertise for bids on the list station renovations.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Three new business. Not withstand adjournance to Guyman Utilities Authority. We're gonna reconvene to Guyman Airport Authority.
No.
Airport Authority. Kind of doing it backwards tonight. Keep everybody on their toes. Call the meeting to order. We'll reconvene to Guyman Airport Authority. Agenda item number two is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 30th, 2017.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March 30th, 2017.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on approval of the change order number one to GCC Enterprises for an increase of $23,385.10 seats. Engineers memo and change order is attached.
Yes, this change order is for final quantities for the project and as, as the engineer said in the letter, they have a final inspection on the 26th, which was earlier this week, and then we'll have a closeout meeting on July 6th. And this was a federal grant for improvements at the airport.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the change order number one to GCC Enterprises for an increase in the amount of $23,385.10.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of invoices to Garver Engineering totaling $44,977.07 for the Guyman Municipal Airport Terminal Project. Invoices are attached. Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the invoices to Garver Engineering totaling $44,977.07 for the Guyman Municipal Airport Terminal Project. Second.
Is it falling on the floor?
It's right here.
Oh, you're standing there. Excuse me, little bleeding. Forgot to put a Band-Aid back on. Okay. We don't need the, we don't need to call, chief, we're good. We don't need that blood kit or anything like that. All right. Any new business?
We got approved.
Cron.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Okay. Lost the scan, sorry. Any new business?
One, one business item. I just found out yesterday that Curtis Brown is no longer gonna be working with Garver Engineering. He's taking a job in Indiana, Illinois, I don't remember which, but it's to be closer to family and we're gonna miss him. He did a lot of great work in the state of Oklahoma, but they'll, they'll have another engineer out here for the closeout meeting next week, but Curtis did a lot of good work in Oklahoma for airports.
Okay. Not withstand adjournance to Guyman Airport Authority. We'll reconvene to Guyman, the city council. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Swager.
Here.
Alvedras.
Here.
Cron.
Aye, here, whatever.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hawkins.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Okay, we've already done agenda item number three. Any public comments and announcements?
I'd just say the firework show is good. Our guys have already started setting up the show. There's about 200 more shells this year than last year. It will be on KKBS, starting at about 9:40 and that'll push it. By the time the intro gets over, the choreographed stuff will start about 9:50, so just be tuned in and you can watch it anywhere in Guyman, so if you have any questions, come out. You can watch the guys load it. They'll be loading Monday and Tuesday at the fire station, so hopefully whoever said we don't have any axle bearings go out. That'd be a bad day.
There's no chance that county commissioners will call for...
No.
Fire ban Monday?
They don't have, they don't have a meeting between now and then.
They don't have one Monday morning?
They have one Monday morning.
Yeah, they'll have one Monday morning, but I haven't called any of the fire chiefs, so it's not gonna be on the agenda. It's not on the agenda, so we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments and announcements. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of budget amendment number one for the general fund for an increase of $108,853.
This transfer is for the purpose of the grant that was received for the fire department. We're setting up a separate line item in, in our accounting to track that grant, so this is the budget amendment for that, receiving that grant. It was a state or federal grant?
It was a state. It's the O E R S I R F F grant.
Easy to say.
Three volume fund grant, so the state gives it out each year. We look, we got it last year. That's what paid for our auto lift cots and this is just cleaning up and getting all that taken care of. We've paid for everything except for Gar, not Garver Engineering, a study to be done in Texas County, which was part of the, part of the grant. So, once it's done, then we'll pay that invoice and we'll be done with that grant, so... The money's already all been expended, so we're just cleaning up our line items, so I don't have a heart attack when I look at my line items.
As I did. He had over expended his equipment budget by 85,000, so I wondered where that fire rescue truck came from.
Out of the 5,000 budget, we over spent by 85,000. He swings all that up.
Okay. Any questions, motion?
I make a motion on approval of budget amendment number one, general fund, increase of 108,853, item five. Second.
Second.
I got a motion in two seconds.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion and possible action to approve the fraternal order of police lodge number 12, 125's, union agreement for fiscal year 2017. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, it's my pleasure to present to you a, a union contract that we negotiated. We met twice with the representatives from the police department and we made one change in the agreement for 2017, which is a benefit, a leave benefit for each of the police officers that will give them 12 hours of pay for their birthday. In the fire contract, they have wellness days. The police department does not have wellness days, so we thought it would be appropriate to provide them with that benefit. We have some other major, minor changes in the contract, but I would recommend approval of this agreement and I thank the police department for their service to the community and within the next 60 days or so, we'll start on 2018.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve the fraternal order of police lodge number 125, union agreement for fiscal year 2017, item six. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Good job, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 818, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances and zoning map of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, with the code of ordinance of the city of Guyman, providing perseverance repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
Dave Platschadel with the planning department. This is an application that was filed by the city to take the old courthouse from P1 to C3, which was its original zoning. We respectfully ask for your approval if you have no questions or comments.
The old city hall?
Right.
Okay.
It's kind of a routine and it's been approved by, it was approved by the plans.
Yeah, it was a condition of the sale and the sale occurred about 90 days ago, so we thought we might be obligated to perform under the terms of the agreement, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 818.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Cron.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Make a motion that we declare ordinance number 818 an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 819, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances and zoning map of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, with the code of ordinances of the city of Guyman, Oklahoma, providing perseverance, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency.
This item was also filed by the city. This is, this action is to rezone this property from C3 to P1, which obviously is its current use. Absent any questions or comments, we would respectfully ask for your approval.
I've got one question. Since this is a lease, a lease purchase and in reality, does the city national banks still own this building until we, can we just go ahead and rezone this?
Yeah, the zoning is, is up to you, aside from that contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 819.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Have a motion to declare an emergency?
I'm, I make a motion that we declare ordinance number 819 an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crown.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedras.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible acts on resolution number 17-10, nomination for District 11 Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal League. This is a, I'm planning, I've been, been contacted by municipal leaders from around the state that are active in OML. The board seat for this district is up this year and I plan on running for it, but you have to, have to have a resolution from your council of support and that's what this is.
How long's the terms?
Three years.
Three years. Pretty common knowledge that I'm not a fan of OML. I've had a couple of real bad experiences with them when I've called down there for requesting information and it's not on the agenda. I'd rather see us move out of OML. I am not a fan of sending down a representative from this part of the area.
OML's got a brand new, a new executive director and I think that there's going to be some drastic changes in the makeup of OML and the direction that it goes and that's why I want to be a part of it.
Would there be another municipal league that we could look at?
No.
Mr. Crown, are you aware of that?
There isn't in, there isn't in the state other than the associations like the mayor's conference or the city managers association, but not any other association, association I'm aware of for cities or municipalities.
My understanding that we meet once a month?
It's, they meet at the same time as for my mayors.
They meet at the same time.
Make no change probably in anything that I've been doing, it's just a different board.
If we nominate you, will you accept Crown's, Mr. Crown's calls better?
Well, I, I was, and I don't know why the, why he hadn't got the interest. Like I said, it's, OML's changing. It's, they've got a brand new executive. He's a, he's a past mayor from Piedmont, so he's made him there.
Yeah. Do, uh, travel expenses, do they?
They, they pay mileage.
They pay mileage, okay.
So the expense, there won't be any change in what I, what it costs, what I've been doing in the past.
Didn't we discuss sending a, or running somebody for this a couple of years ago, two or three years ago?
Not that I know of because nobody's from, has ever, well, it's been three years and I don't remember anybody from here wanting to be on.
What was the board that Mrs. Meek?
That was O-MAG.
O-MAG, okay.
So this resolution is just, it's just opening the door for board of directors, right? Or we actually wanted to nominate somebody?